Was not quite the force that she uses.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting in order. Make sure you got your all your mics on. Okay, all right, let's go ahead and stand for the pledge for all of our members. Thank you. Go ahead with the roll call.
Commissioner Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner Walter.
Here.
Commissioner Bonnet.
Present.
Commissioner Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here and present.
Commissioner Allgayer. Just here. Chairman Yoder.
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have approval of more minutes. I see we got four different sets here. Do that all in one motion.
Can I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Or by Commissioner Walter, discussion? Not in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Or opposed, say nay. Next up, we got approval of the agenda, late additions or deletions.
I would like to remove for discussion on the consent agenda of the sheriff's office, 1B, rain control, how we're supposed to adjust.
All right, we're moving down the agenda. Six. Six. All right, Commissioner Wessel.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Or by Commissioner Robbins, discussion? All right, in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero. All right, next up, we have communications administrator update.
Just a few things to report since your last meeting. Now, this morning I had the attended my first meeting as a member of the Bayonne County Land Bank Authority and also the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. One of the things that we did this morning, in fact, quite a number of the items on both of those agenda were for were pursue items for peninsula housing, in particular, an agreement to take into into the shared ownership of peninsula housing and the land bank authorities some property that currently owned by the Suttons Bay School System that has potential for has potential for attainable housing. So I kind of viewed that as the beginning of potentially the county's involvement that again, not as a developer, but as someone that will assist in the facilitation of solving that problem for the county. I've continued to review policies and meeting with my direct reports as I indicated last meeting. Also attended my first with the board chair, my first meetings of the local planning team and the emergency planning committee. Also have had conducted numerous meetings and done some personal research regarding the Sean Green, which drew some comment at your your last meeting. And I should reiterate what I said at that meeting, that the drain code actually is intended to remove the direct involvement of the board of commissioners and support the notion that some properties that contribute to a drainage problem bear the cost or some of the costs to remediate that problem. But I've also scheduled for Thursday a meeting with Mr. Scales, who was the party that attended the same time that your last meeting, that should take place Thursday at 10:00 AM. And get a better idea of his concerns and how they might be alleviated by the drain. And lastly, I was informed this morning, since I have a plaque, can't go anywhere, Commissioner Allgayer made that very clear. So I think that that's, you know, appropriate holding handcuffs, I suppose. That concludes my report for the for this meeting.
Any questions for the administrator?
It was good to have him on the land bank of Brownfield because of his his background. He's pretty complete, so we have a lot to add.
I appreciate that. As I indicated there and repeat here, I spent a number of years when I was down in Calvin County as the council for the county and specifically council for the land bank authority itself. So a lot of experience dealing with legal issues and the issues that are coming from board such as that.
Any other questions? All right, if not, we are on to our first public comment. If I wish to address the board, you have three minutes. Any agenda specific? Any items on the agenda? You have any members that wish to give a public comment? All right, well, why do you think, all right?
Wait, oh man.
I just takes that down too, right?
Right then, now.
All right, next up, we have commissioner comments. Is everybody asleep tonight?
You know, I would like to say I was in Brownfield Land Bank. This is the third time I've said the pledge of allegiance today. And when I get to the last phrase with liberty and justice for all, I'm putting in an extra prayer. Because we are at peril for liberty and justice for all. And I hope we will all work for it. And we uphold that here in this county, and that's important, so I thank all of us.
Any other commissioner comments? Now, we're on to our consent agenda. I'll just read a statement here. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected and will not need a second. Funny?
I move to approve the consent agenda. All right.
Or by Commissioner Walter, all right? Do a roll call now.
Commissioner Bonnet.
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Walter.
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel.
Yes.
Chairman Yoder.
Yes.
Commissioner Allgayer.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. All right, that moves us to our action items. Number one, we have finance, Michigan Indigent Defense Commission.
I'd like to introduce Paul Jarboe of Jarboe and Field. He is our managed assigned corporate counsel for our MI DC, and he's here to present the cost analysis for the fiscal year ending 26. It's a fiscal year October 1 to September 30. And in your packet is the documents that is a proposed budget, and I'll let you take it from here.
Okay, thanks Kathy. I'm glad I came on time. I didn't realize that things were going to move this quickly, but very good, very glad that it is. I know some of you, I haven't met everybody, James, I haven't met too, so welcome and congratulations on your position. As Kathy has indicated, my office serves as what's referred to as a managed assigned council administrator or coordinator for Linnon County. We've been in this role for your county since October of 2021. We've also served in that role for both Grand Traverse and Antron County since February of 2020. Part of our responsibilities on your behalf is to prepare a proposed plan, financial plan, for the next fiscal year. That proposed plan is what's been presented tonight. What you folks will be asked to do is to vote on approval of the proposed financial plan to be submitted to the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission. The big picture is that the majority of the funding for indigent criminal defense, what is referred to as court appointing attorneys, shifted away from the counties and shifted to the state. The 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 documents that you have in front of you, and I refer you specifically to, I think it's your page three of the packet, which is a proposed cost analysis. There are two columns, one which will show what the current fiscal year plan is. It's referred to as FY 25, which runs through the end of September of this year. By April 25, our office is responsible to submit on your behalf a proposed budget for fiscal year 26, which will begin October 1st of 2025 through the end of September of 2026. This will be about the third or fourth time that we've done this with the assistance of your finance department. The there isn't really too much of a change in the numbers from this current fiscal year to the proposed budget for next year. We've tried to break it out for you so you can see where there are some adjustments, which we are recommending. That would include under attorney compensation, the fact that there is a mandatory increase in the attorney compensation for the attorneys that handle the assigned cases. That's reflected in the new number under fiscal year 26. We also each year go back and take a look at the number of cases and defendants that have been represented by the attorneys that handled the assigned cases. I think the documents you've been provided indicate that there have been a total of 208 cases handled by the attorneys that accept the case assignments representing 177 defendants in calendar year 2024, which is the most recent full calendar year we have. There are some small increases in some of the out of pocket expenses. We actually are able to report that your what's referred to as the local share, which is what each of the counties is asked to contribute by the state of Michigan, that your local share is actually decreasing this year. It's a modest decrease, but any decrease in my world is a good is a good thing. I'm also happy to report that in the budget that was approved for fiscal year 24, there was actually, we were came in under budget, and you'll be happy to hear this. We were actually $24,000, $26,000, I'm told, under budget with the work that we did in fiscal year 2024. Those funds then roll over into our current fiscal year 2025. So there the ultimate receipt of the funds from the state of Michigan is really a two part process. The first is today or now in which we present the proposed compliance plan and proposed budget. You folks vote on that. If it's approved, which we're asking you to do, it will then be submitted to the state of Michigan. They will review it. If they have any questions for us, they'll let us know. If there are questions for finance, they'll let finance know. Sometime this late summer, they'll come back with a proposed grant, and then that grant will then come to you before you for approval. So right now, this is our proposal, which we're asking you to approve so that we can submit it to Lansing. It's due on or before April 25. And then you'll see it again sometime this fall. Usually, I think it's probably August. And for final approval, after the state of Michigan has had a chance to take a look at it and make any adjustments which they're looking for. Kathy, there to answer any questions, if anybody has any?
You you estimate there'll be 10 life cases this year at about $6,000 per.
Correct.
If there's nine, if there are nine, then we just wouldn't spend all of our budget and money. It would be credited to next year.
Correct. Right, so that there really is no penalty or danger in terms of overestimating if the funds are not fully used, because the case count that we think will happen next year based upon historical numbers. If that's too high, then those funds which will which have been approved by the state of Michigan will just be rolled over to the next year. So.
And if it's not high enough, that you'll come back and amend it.
Right, there are there's mechanisms for us to go back to the state of Michigan to ask for additional funding. Any additional funding over your local share, which is that number in the second column, will be the state of Michigan's responsibility, not the county's.
Thank you.
Yeah, so so when you submit this, if they see that you have, you know, an overage or money left over from last year, can they subtract that from this mission or?
Yes, basically what's we there is a report that's called an unexpended funds report, which we have to submit each year, which the finance department submits. And the most recent one was for fiscal year 24, which indicated that there was an overage of funding of $26,000. They then simply roll that into the next year and whatever's approved for the next fiscal year is reduced by that number. Yeah.
So we don't get to commit to keep.
Well, depends how quiet you want to be.
And it's a reimbursement. We pay invoices first and submit for reimbursement. It's always we always use our money first and then we reimburse. So the state actually has that money. Correct, yeah.
I don't think we have we have a lot of latitude as far as what we can do sitting up here for this budget. So I I look at this more as kind of a litmus test, if you will. And so the thing I would have wanted to see would have been some kind of comparison as far as the number of cases. This, the last one was reported was 2024. If that's going up or down, and then a breakdown between the misdemeanors and the felonies, which since there's different pay different rates paid should probably be pretty easy. And that's for me, I would I'd like to know, are we getting more indigent cases through the years? Are we not? And then honestly, it's like they say, we don't have a lot of latitude, but it helps, I think, as for me as a commissioner to get a feel for what's going on out there and within our pocket.
Well, I we actually have all that data because that's how we got to the recommendations that are contained within the proposed compliance plan. So and sometimes you'd like to sit down and I'd be happy to break that open with you. Katie Richards, my office has kept all of those records, can tell you exactly.
Going up or down or up staying pretty steady?
You folks are pretty steady. You folks are pretty steady, which is a good thing. What can happen is that you get one or two cases which are outside the norm, which are which become more difficult, more expensive for whatever reason. But for the most part, you people are pretty steady.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
Commissioner Allgayer.
I move that the county board of commissioners approve the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission, MI DC proposal. A proposed cost analysis for Linnon County FY 26 as presented.
Or by Commissioner Robbins, Mr. Money. Discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in the fall. Oh, I thought so. You said thank you very easily.
All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven zero.
Good to see everybody. Thank you. Thanks Kathy, appreciate it very much.
All right, next up, we got item number B, which is the purchase of tires for drain commissioner truck, late addition. That's, yeah, it might as well stay here.
Might as well.
Mike?
Yeah, I move that the Linnon County Board of Commissioners approve the purchase of four 255 slash 65 R17 Nokia outpost, all weather, all train crossover tires from Snyder Tire Outlet. Honestly, come from the motor pool for a total amount of 633.96.
Worth. Or by Commissioner Wessel, discussion?
I just have a question. Why don't you do this just before winter? And save us all whether tires or the all weather.
Mr. Money?
Just gonna be running them down all summer long in nice weather.
I saw this the other day and do a lot of thinking. I mean, we went run around over a pickup truck that we almost spent $9,000 more for than we needed to. And I called my good friend Darth A1 Tires, who does all the tires for Grand Traverse State Place. He's a tire expert. I told him what we had on the pickup truck. I told him what Commissioner Onan wants, and he says, it's a waste of money. You're, it's $700, but it's still $700 of tax money. We're not gonna improve anything. I mean, our records show that he puts about 3,000 miles a year on, and if he really has to go in the mud, I suggest that he get out and walk. He is a surveyor. He's used to walking the train, and I just say it's like I said, $700, but again, it's $700 that we don't have to spend. It's a brand new pickup truck. It only has, I don't even know if it even has any miles on it right now. And if you or I bought that same pickup truck, I don't think we'd swap tires. And I'm saying that I'm gonna go against it because I don't feel the need right now.
All right, to respond to Commissioner Allgayer's question.
The Commissioner Robbins has dealt with the the issue of what we have been informed is that the tires are they're basically road tires that are on the truck now and these are these are as as indicated, tires intended for driving in mud, snow, conditions other than pavement, road pavement. I basically have to go off the assurances of Mr. Onan, that's what's necessary for his need, but I understand there's difference of opinion. Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I I have the same concerns. We got a brand new truck with brand new tires. Why are we buying so tires? Tires are tires, okay? You know, I bought snow tires, I bought off season radios, I bought regular tires, and when it's crappy, it's crappy, it really doesn't matter, but I just see it as an insurance we don't need to deal with at this time. I don't I don't see the need for the for the mud tires, you know, for the for the five projects we have in the county or four projects we have in the county goes off the shoulder of the road in lots.
Mr. Money?
Yeah, I mean, just just because we're buying these tires doesn't mean they have to be put on right this minute. I think she has a good point in that. You know, we'll have two sets of tires and, you know, I know I've had some tires put on in October and and I run out, you know, other tires during the summer. But also when I worked in construction, I wanted my snow tires on all the time because the mud, the sand, especially sand can get into, and you can get out of it with that much included for the drive, but I, you know, just because I do think we should buy them, I just don't think that he has to put them on right away. They're his, they'll be his tires, and he'll have the road tires all the time.
Mr. Allgayer?
Can I make my decision about snow tires around October? If he struggles with these tires in the summer and finds out that they're not sufficient, then he can bring it back, but I don't see why we should do this right now.
Mr. Robbins?
One thing I forgot to add, when I did speak with our Garth the last couple of days, well, he said, I mean, he compared the tires that we want to buy and tires that are on there. He said they're pretty much the same. But he did say if we wanted to increase the traction by 30% for a hundred bucks, we can take the vehicle to him, he can whatever he does to the machine, and he can make make them so the traction will increase by 30% if that would happen. So a hundred bucks, we could fix the problem that Will Dogger lost no tires.
I like it.
What's happening with the old tires? It's still, what will happen to the old tires?
Well, that was the other thing.
Either use them on another vehicle or replace those tires when if at some point in time we sell that vehicle and have road tires rather than than the Nobby tires on. Do we have another vehicle that might use? I mean, it makes sense to me. If you just want to upgrade, then you can reuse the old tires, but it doesn't make sense to trash forever good tires. Just my, this this kind of gives gives me the this is why late additions like this are probably not the best time to that to vet a a decision like this, even if it's a low dollar a lot more staff or would have could have gone into this from my office if, and I've been aware of these, there were these concerns about about this sort of thing. And frankly, I took this as a relatively routine request as it was presented to me, but obviously I need a little bit more you need a little bit more information if you decide that this is not not acceptable at this time.
Sure. When we are buying new vehicles, we have the motor pool fund, and this invoice came to my attention, and I have no funds and no motion to pay it. It's in front of you for that reason, and Motor Pool has its own funds. And your motion to buy the truck was specific to the dollar, so there was nothing extra built into that motion to put these tires on.
Have you already bought it?
The tires are on the truck.
Question I have is, is this supposed to come out of, you need to educate, is this supposed to come out of motor?
Motor pool.
Why is it other departments, it comes out of their budget? So what's different?
That's replacement tires of an older vehicle. This is a brand new vehicle, and we're building the car. I mean, we're building it. So like when we build a patrol car, if it's canine, the cage, the lights, the radio, that's all added to the car in the motor pool fund.
I didn't, Commissioner Onan, tell me that when I spent a half a day of my own time at Williams Chevrolet trying to get the county the best deal I could.
I will let you ask him that question.
I want the deed is done.
Administrator Dyer is correct. We have the other tires there in storage. They're designated for this truck. So there'll be a backup.
Don't we usually when we build something, build it before we as we're as we're buying it so that we don't do it? Okay, so yeah, I'd have a hard time voting yes.
With with the knowledge that we don't really need it. And we're gonna store some in the building if we got a room to store it. I'm, I'm with you. If we need it later, let's get them for tires.
Except they're already on, so now we're stuck.
So that's my question, like, how does that work?
You can't return them now.
Well, you're gonna notice I didn't wear my hearing aids today. I missed that.
They're already on the truck.
Yeah, so when the initial thing was proposed to us, it was proposed as having these tires on the vehicle that we were gonna buy. We got, we went round and round about it and actually ended up with a different vehicle. And I, you know, we did talk about getting the tires for it. So that it was actually, I believe that we we voted to put the tires on, so we just didn't provide the money for it because we went by the price. That he had given us for the vehicle, so we didn't. So I, I think right from the beginning. The Drake Commissioner wanted those tires, the the snow and mud tires on the truck. And that was the first proposal that actually had had the those tires on it. And the two bids were between, the difference was the tires were on one, wasn't on the other in the bids. And so that's what made the difference in the initial, the initial thing, but we threw all of those out and went with what Commissioner Robbins did. And that's the way I remember it. So it was planned to have those tires on right from the beginning. So they are on, and I think we should just go ahead with it. And I don't know why we're making. You know, we're very willing to give away lots of money, but we're fighting over six hundred and thirty three dollars.
Yeah, I do. I do remember what Commissioner Money brought up there. I do remember that now. So with with that in mind.
It's a dumb deal, so.
Commissioner Robbins, and then I'm gonna call a question.
Okay, yeah. No, that was not the case because I remember. Two things I remember going back and forth. Tim said he wanted that vehicle. That one had a better deal with tires, they cost more, but this is what it costs if you put it. He didn't say. You know, we were gonna get, and on Monday night before we voted on that Tuesday night meeting, I gave him all the specs. I talked to him on the phone about the tires. He said everything was okay. So what has happened in two weeks here? I mean. You know, it's just, you know, this is not good government action here. This is sloppy work.
All right, with that. Discussion ended. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I do roll call now. My ears are not quite that good.
Commissioner Bonick?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
No.
Commissioner Walter?
No.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Algar? Yes, cuz I don't wanna stiff the tire dealer. Hi, to two passes. I need to learn from this.
That will move on to item number two, which is clerk administration authorized signatories for MERS. Sure.
This is just updating files for the records with MERS for the signers. When the prior administrator was here, Richard, he was listed as interim administrator. And we needed to update it to the county administrator and Mr. Guyer and I also talked and we also. Added a county clerk so that we have two in-house signers. Although most of our documents are signed by the chairman because they have it right before meetings, so it's just covering in case Stevens isn't available. And Richard's title updated.
All right, I got three hands up here. Mr. Algar? And then motion first.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners approve as updated Resolution twenty twenty five zero zero five. Resolution established authorized signatories for MERS contracts and service credit purchase.
Commissioner Russell, discussion? All right, discussion, go ahead and roll call.
Commissioner Algar?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonick?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Commissioner Wessel?
Yes.
Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, you. Next up, we have emergency management, one law enforcement, ready of encryption.
As you recall, at our, at your previous meeting, this was an information only item. It's on the agenda only if there was. More, there was going to be more information pre presented. There's no action that's necessary. I don't know if there's, is there anything from, there's no other, no other action that we presented.
I believe I, we requested to be on here so I can make committee assignment.
That's, that's also true.
Yeah, so with that in mind, I'll, I'll put myself, Mr. Funic, that's good. You don't need a vote for that, all right?
This is a protest.
Any objection to that? All right. All right, next up, we are at number four, which is planning materials management plan release of RFP.
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners authorized our design designated, shouldn't that be designated? Planning agency to release an RFP for consultant services for the draft material management plan. Consider. Recommendation of the M M P C approve and sign any agreement. With a selected consultant and utilize evil materials management. Planning grant funding to cover the cost of the consulting services.
Commissioner Russell, discussion?
I I had requested that more emphasis be placed on. On the state paying for this. And when you say utilize, just means you accept their money. Doesn't mean that you're not allocating or requiring county money to be a part of that. Um, that that's the concern I brought up last time and and you and I talked about. Do you have any ideas, Jim, or? Well, I'm during the meeting we talked about.
I think there's a lot of ways you can amend amend the the motion to indicate that. You do not intend to contribute county money beyond the evil materials management planning. Grant funds. I I understand your concern regarding the. Regarding the word utilized as being a little bit. Potentially interpreted as flexible. I would interpret that frankly as as limited rather than than flexible. But again, I. If there was any, any question at all regarding that. You could even use utilize to limit as to source to. Rather than utilize. Someone suggested, I can't remember, on that loud end down there. Inserting the, inserting the word. All or something like that towards the end. And I'm not, I'm not saying we aren't gonna end up paying for it, but I don't want to end up paying for it through this motion. I I. Want folks to know, we're gonna look at that very closely.
It does say.
Only, there is the word. And to only utilize would accomplish that. And then if they want to come back with another. Proposal that that seems justified, I'd certainly. Look at that. Obviously, lawyer wants these five words, well, one will suffice. I I think that that would be, that would be. That would be an appropriate change to the motion if you want to do that as an amendment. I would offer that as an amendment to include the word only.
That's important.
Motion support discussion on the amendment? Not all in favor of that, that amendment, say aye? Opposed, say nay? All right, now we're back to the original motion with, only as that discussion on the original motion. All right.
It still has only?
Yes.
Yes, it's only, only is.
Only it's added by amendment.
Okay. I'll just clarify, so it will be. A move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners authorize our designated planning agency. To release an RFP for consultant services for the draft material management plan. Consider the recommendation of the N M P C approve and sign any agreement. With a selected consultant and only utilize evil materials management.
I would recommend that we're only after the word utilized.
And utilize only is that where it goes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Otherwise, yes, that would be the.
I don't know where to place it, so.
Yeah, I think that's a better way to place it, put it.
You got everything? All right. All in favor of that motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? Motion carries seven zero. All right, next up, we are up to administration, legislation room, interesting construction.
Sure, I'm just here to help out.
As you recall, that at your last meeting, this I, as I recall, was removed from the. Consent agenda to discuss the. Again, where, where to place it, the actual construction process and the and the and the total cost. Motion, the recommended motion as it exists now, if we need to limit the. Purchase to twelve thousand dollars, that was that that has discussed at your, at your executive meeting. And since then. If you, if you recall the proposal, there were a number of line items, the total. Twelve thousand dollars totals, as as Kathy has pointed out to. Me with limit would would. Not have the floor and casters that would permit the movement of the, of the structure. And to do, to add that as an option would actually bring the total cost to thirteen thousand dollars. We do not have a specific place to. To put it. Put the, put the. The actual structure. But I don't know that you need to have that in the, in the, in this motion. This is primarily to. To purchase the, the item. Could be subject to further action by the board as to placement of it. We don't think it's that the. What's the, the storage room on the, what would that, which side of the building would that be?
It's on that side in the lower corner.
Sometimes referred to as the.
Ugly room.
Staff does not believe that it's a, that is, that's the best location for it. More likely the lower level elevator lobby, which is not in a stairwell. It is publicly accessible and could probably be a better placement based upon the size of the structure. And would be accessible to both staff and the public, which we have the. The legal obligation to provide both, both staff and public that. But that's that. All the service, basically. So I would suggest that that the motion. Include an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars rather than twelve thousand dollars. So we can produce a movable. A movable item rather than a. One that is in a specific location only. And and that, again, to emphasize that would not include the cost of of. Of assembly. Our Pat Roach believes that this is something that could be assembled by our, our own, our own staff. So that's, that's our recommendation. Mr. Russell?
Yes, I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners waive county bid policy and approve the construction of lactation room at the Leland County Government Center. In Sutton Bay of Michigan using panel built incorporated as a primary vendor for the. Reproducative structure supplemented with cost effective furnishing equipment, not to, not to exceed thirteen thousand. Plus, what's, what number?
Thirteen thousand would be sufficient.
Not to exceed thirteen thousand if applied with the Affordable Care Act by August one, two, twenty twenty five.
Or like Commissioner Robbins?
Just a comment about that. I like placement outside of the, outside of that room down there. I think at some point we may want to use that for something else. Plus, it's a lot warmer and 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 nicer looking down where your proposal.
But but again, with the, with the inclusion of the casters, it could be moved to other locations. In particular, if there was a, a need to use that space, any, any space downstairs for a, for another purpose. That's why I think the addition of the. The casters is important.
I did a walkabout and I did talk to some staff members and I took the elevator downstairs as though I were. A person entering the building and that lobby right below the elevator is spacious. I think it would tuck in there by the plate glass window quite nicely. And there's also another, if you took the hall and went around about right behind the door that enters, I, it's four by six. The dimensions, so it could even tuck behind the door going down the hallway. Toward the big meeting room. And what is nice is you've got four, well, two. Women's restrooms very close, which is a requisite of the statute or the law as well. So I did a walkabout thinking if I were to use it as a member of the public, and it's not tucked away at the far corner. Of the building in that space at the end of the hallway. So I think just doing a little walkabout, that seemed fine. I did look at your motion and Administrator Dyer and I didn't talk about this. It says. Supplemented with cost effective furnishings and equipment. There is no equipment or furnishings included in that thirteen thousand. I think there is a chair that was purchased by the prior, prior administrator, if I recall. Does anyone have history to remember? We do have a reclining chair.
Some of the. I I actually thought there were.
Because this could be the tires again.
I thought that there was particularly.
I thought we did. I think we do have a chair. It's in the ladies locker room now, which is not compliant. So, okay, just so we don't have a tire issue with the lactation.
Mr. Money?
Yeah, I mean, she, she just made a point there and that it's four feet wide so that it can't really roll around. I mean, it's never gonna fit through any door. It's gonna have to be disassembled to get through any door. They're not four feet wide, they're three, that's about three quarters.
Yeah. And it's actually four six, you know, with the framing is.
I don't know the reason for the wheels or the floor, cuz. Let's, he, when Patrick was here, he talked about to move it, he would have to disassemble it and put it back together wherever he wanted, so. I don't know that we really need the floor, but I mean, that would just be something that can be decided. I mean, I still leave that amount in there, but I.
I prefer that she do that so we can have some flexibility in in that decision. I did talk to Pat today and he did suggest that we have the floor and the casters, but again.
To get in it and we'll push her around.
All right, any other discussion? All right, not all there, the motion, obviously, aye? All opposed, say nay?
Where you're gonna pay for this? It will be a special projects line item in the board of commissioners' budget and it'll be amended in May.
All right, next up, we have item number B, which is government center repair. It's not an addition.
The. Material provided indicates the, the reason for the, the reason for the repair and and the solution. The only question or the only additional item that I would indicate we consider. The. Proposal, I guess I would call it, that's provided by story does not include provisions, for example, that. That they will comply with the insurance requirements for. Contractors insurance and that sort of thing. Subject to that. Would ask you support the. Support this as a late addition and get the roof repair completed. would ask you support the, support this as a late addition and get the roof repair completed.
Bunnick?
I was just wondering, where is it leaking? If it's out here in front, we should get Pete Nebo to fix it. I don't know where it is.
I think that is where, where it's located.
I think he guaranteed it. He did that, I don't know, about five years ago.
Three, three years. I don't believe it's that same location.
I recall being told it was, the ceiling tiles were showing a leak in the probate court area upstairs.
Yes, main second floor hallway and second floor. Or probate court site outside courtroom seat. Investigated in the attic, Wayne Flaska found that the water was coming in the southwest valley of the courthouse. Due to ice wall in the valley. Moving ceiling tiles. Full water with towels, story roofing assessed.
All right, Mr. Russell?
I move to waive this policy and approve the roof repairs, new and story roofing company, an amount of $6,196. The funds to come from account ending in 775-000.
Second.
What about Commissioner Roberts' discussion?
Um, I, how was story roofing selected?
I, I believe they, they responded to the, to the leak as a, on an emergency basis, basically. I, I wasn't, this was before my time, actually, as an administrator, but.
Well, my other question would be a lot of times metal roofs come with a 25, 50 year warranty. I, I don't know if it's for workmanship or not metal shingles.
Whoops.
Well, we're in 25 years. Probably a hand dryer.
Warranties usually don't cover damage from the ice, ice dam. It's not.
It's the permanent maintenance.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor of that motion say aye. Oppose say nay. All right, next up, we have, which is new addition, I have a number six, which is marine control, our budget adjustment that could move down from consent agenda. Roberts, did you have a motion in mind on that or did you have a discussion or what? No, no.
Um, yeah, since last Tuesday, when we talked about the marine control hours budget amendment there, the $12,000 that was going in at the last minute. Commander, Commissioner Dyer, we're thinking about taking the money out of the T and T fund. Jen came up with the donation there. Afterwards, I thought, you know, it sounded like a good idea, you know, $5,600. That was a donation. I don't think we want to start sending a message to our public who donates money to a good cause and we're going to use it for wages. I think that needs to be there for a special need for whatever the department needs. So with that, I would like to withdraw that part of it and go back to the original motion there. And we just, I make a motion that we, on the original motion, we take the funds out of the T and T account for any adjustments for the marine.
I'd recommend if that, that is your, your preference, that we use the consent agenda item number one B motion and instead change the last word from as amended to as presented. The original presentation of the, of the, of the motion included the, using the TNT budget for, for the entirety of the wage adjustment.
So you want to change it to as presented?
Yes, and either that will, that, or even as originally presented, which would emphasize that it was to come from the TNT budget.
Okay. I move that we oppose the amendment to the 2025 stepping level of the sheriff's office marine division to reflect an increase in seasonal hours from 6:20 to 7:50 hours and to authorize the finance director to, what's the word?
What to recommend? Yeah, amend the budget of the marine division as originally presented.
Okay, recommend the budget as originally presented.
Work. Motion made by Commissioner Roberts, supported by Commissioner Westall, discussion? All right, now, all in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries seven zero. All right, with that, we're up to review of financials.
Thank you. You have before you a one page late, late, that I, I know we're not fans of lately, I kept it to one page. It is to ask for you to approve payment for a Blue Cross Blue Shield bill for inmate care across the street. Cole Stoker for the retainer, non-retainer, Micah Myers, who represents Leland County in the Grand Terrace County, Leland County beta issue. And two things that are required that could shut us down if we don't renew on time. Zoom being one of them for inmate arraignments and whatnot. So I did, I apologize, I know we don't want to do lately. I called Commissioner Bunnick last night and explained the situation. These came in after three o'clock on Friday afternoon. You had already seen late claims in your inboxes, so to stay timely with those.
Could you give a little bit of detail for the non-retainer Cole Stoker charge?
The non-retainer, I can tell you that it has to do with things in regard to the litigation that we're currently in. Is that enough to be said or do I expand more? We have two litigation pieces going on with the POM and dispatch. So if it falls outside, outside of the retainer.
It would actually, rather than litigation, be arbitration.
Arbitration, yeah.
More accurate.
Thank you. Yes.
Yeah, you, you talked about, you know, the, the medical over at the jail and there was $4,000. I'm filling in there, $4,200 some dollars. Is that very common? I mean, I guess what are we spending for medical at the jail?
Well, last year, that was a concern in the jail budget. We were amending following the medical costs of one inmate in particular. If they are a guest of our jail, because they are our, our inmate, we carry that cost. If they are an inmate that belongs to another county, we bill them and we get reimbursed for that. So it just depends on who, we pay the bill. And then if it's a, and I don't have the detail on that inmate, I can get it from the Administrator Roush and get it to you.
Like, that's just not, but then I also saw a lot, quite a few bills for wrenches and mechanic tools. I mean, what, I mean, we've been, how many spend in existence for quite a while? Do we need a whole new set of tools?
That, I, that has not escaped my attention that there are quite a few invoices in that regard.
So where are they going or what are they doing? You sure you don't know where they go?
There's.
I'd like to ask Patrick that.
Yeah, I know there's some new tool chests in your, in your claims as well. And I know that it is my job to bring to your attention anything that is out of the ordinary and is not budgeted. So I would say that some of those items that you're seeing are not budgeted. The larger ticket items.
We'll have to look into that.
I think that would be good.
Thank you.
There is an invoice in there that crept up on me. I reviewed today because we looked at the dam and we were approving easeling for the, and then mission, the roof, you've done that in your consent agenda. And I think I mentioned that I was going to follow with a budget amendment in May to help offset some of that because we've now done fund transfers for the walkway and now we're exceeding what I originally transferred last year. And I thought it would be 7,000, but I saw an invoice in claims today, Cherry Capital Electric to replace the controller. And it was some labor involved in reprogramming and we talked, Administrator Dyer and I talked about the fact that this is a sensing computer. But it's, and also last year, there was a water level sensor installed. This is very technical for me. I did ask IT a little bit about it. But that was $2,500. So your amendment that you'll see in May, when we get our new revenue figures, I'm going to follow the drain or the dam fund, excuse me, dam fund with $10,000 transfer from general fund rather than seven. Because that bill just, I was not aware of that one.
I think that we have established that we have to do regularly a fund for the dam. So because there's going to be always ongoing expenses there.
There's a, a base budget that we always set up every year. I think it's $21,000 and that's sufficient to pay for the electricity for the components that are in that building and some repairs and maintenance. And we start with 21,000 every year. So in the last two years, 24 and year to date in 25, and we haven't seen all the bills yet, but I've got the money with this other transfer. There's been $200,000 worth of repairs and improvements to the dam in the last two years. 24 in this year.
Because there was talk before about doing as an assessment for what, and we decided not to do that. But I'm thinking that we may have to increase that budget from above 21,000. So it'll be something we need to look at at budget type. Because I don't want to do a special assessment.
Definitely the case.
Okay.
Yes.
I really appreciate the spreadsheet that you sent us this morning. I think that's very useful.
I'd had, that was one of my goals when I became your finance director last year, something that I thought would be useful and interesting. I think I put that in my email to you. That, yes, you do have your general fund, cash, money market and investments, and you do have your unplugged DTR, delinquent tax revolving fund monies. But there's also cash in your funds. And many of those are because of transfers from the general fund, because we have to fund the funds, so to speak. But I think I was asking myself, are we really at $24 million? And we are. And this doesn't include the road commission, land bank or brownfield.
Any other questions for?
I was thinking, it was a little bit time consuming to set it up the first time. If you'd like to see this, I, I think monthly would be a lot for my staff and myself, but maybe quarterly. If you wouldn't mind seeing it quarterly, I think that I could produce that. And it does require me to work, and it's a good thing, to work collaboratively with the treasurer's office to get their bank reconciliations so that we can prove out and produce this document for you.
It's very helpful, thank you.
Okay, would you like it? Thank you.
Anything else stand?
We have a motion to approve this later.
That will be later on.
Yeah.
Lost in space here.
All right, that, that will move on to special reports by staff commissioners and others, special reports.
I'd like to just make a comment about Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. And I, I would urge us to have the chair of the health authority and maybe director talk to us. Significant, significant, significant impact across our region. Our, our, our Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Agency is being directed to cut $8 million out of their budget. That's an awful lot of mental health services for our five county area. And many of those are, are people that most need services. I think we need to know what our neighbors are facing and I think we need to help our community mental health authority make wise decisions about how they do prioritize the, the balance of the budget. So I would urge that we, we bring them in next week or next month's meeting or the following month's meeting and give us an update. I think it's very, very important.
Special reports. All right, now, you're on to our final public comments. Anybody has five minutes to address the board? Sir?
Good evening. Keith Ashley from Leland Township. Welcome, Mr. Dyer, to your position here. Look forward to seeing what you do for us. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Alguire for your remarks, liberty, justice for all. It's a nice segue into the comments I wanted to make tonight. We all support the statement that's on the sign behind me that says, we support law enforcement. It's not unique to any particular party. And we've probably have all seen pictures and videos on the television and Facebook and the likes of armed men dressed in blue jeans, black hoods, face mask, armed vests, got all kinds of stuff. Seizing people in public, breaking into their vehicles, pulling them out without displaying warrants. In spite of people saying, I want to see the warrant, they end up getting taken away in handcuffs. Our sheriff has been quoted in the past and recently that he would be okay with assisting ICE if requested. And I think that's appropriate if it's a law enforcement issue. My question is, will he require seeing a warrant if they ask for help? And if not, is the county put at risk if an arrest is made and determined to be illegal, as there have been several that are in the news today? And I think it's a question that should be pursued and settled between this board and the sheriff so that we are not in a position of liability. And so the sheriff understands, and I don't know what control you have over the sheriff, but you control the purse. That we are not put in a position later on that an illegal arrest has been made and that person, if they survive it, comes back to the county sheriff and files a lawsuit and we become liable.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dana Getzinger, Elmwood Township, and I just have an observation. I, last Monday, yesterday, went to my trustee meeting in Elmwood and it was one hour and two minutes. And here's what was amazing. Nobody seemed to waste a lot of time with frivolous questions. It was kind of apparent here tonight that some of you hadn't read your packet. You didn't know where the leak was. You didn't know what the roof was made out of. I'm also at a board and when I go to that board, I read things ahead of time, so I know what's happening. So I'd appreciate that from my commissioners as well. Thank you.
Jean Peterson from Empire Township. I just want to say how pleased I am to live in a county that cares for all of its citizens. Your support of early childhood programs gives working parents an opportunity to bring their children together to socialize and learn. And it gives the parents an opportunity to support each other and learn without the distraction of their kids. Senior citizens who meals on wheels delivers nutritious meals to people who struggle to get out of their houses. But they also have congregate meals and I know that they are trying to expand their congregate meals to where they were pre-COVID. Because they've asked if they can use our Lions building in Maple City for that. This not only provides a nutritional meal, but it fights loneliness, which becomes a serious issue with some seen. This not only provides a nutritional meal, but it fights loneliness, which becomes a serious issue with some seniors. They also have that memory cafe that helps people who have, who helps families who are dealing with a member who has dementia. So it helps the person with dementia and it helps to give support to the families who are, who are living with that. And you are really good about keeping up county parks. I'm most familiar with Old Settlers Park and Kimmerly, Miles Kimmerly Park, which is always full of soccer teams or little league teams or people play on disc golf. Or they even have a driving range there. I think I've seen people there once or twice doing that. That allows all of our families to get out and play together. And that's vital too. So I just want to thank you for having a great county to live in. Thank you.
Good evening, Steve Mikowski. Drains, I think that Commissioner Campbell was at the Leland Township meeting last night and heard about the issues with the drains. And I hope that'll be properly followed up on so that county taxpayers will be and the solution may come from alternatives rather than lots of expensive activity. I'm sure there are in the private sector, if we needed a request to do things and present things as managers, we were required, anything we proposed to have at least one or two alternatives. I find sometimes it's quite lacking here, particularly when there are so many entities involved. The tires, I'm sure that these tires that we're going to set aside for years or a vehicle that drives 3,000 miles a year. I'm not sure, do we have a program which these tires could be sold immediately for some kind of profit? Or used immediately? Otherwise tire lives are limited on the tire, whether the tire is new or not. It has a date stamp. And any authorized person that's working on tires in the entire industry will tell you that if it's over X amount of years old, we won't even touch it. We want to remove it or we want to, we'll touch it, we'll remove it. But you can't put it on another rim. So if we have a lot of aging tires in our warehouse, we should be conscious of it. The next thing is the question of housing. We keep changing the terms about housing. Now, at least two terms, if not more. One is attainable, one is affordable. I don't know what next word we'll use to, to describe this thing in a very broad way. So commissioners may be fogged up and not understand what they're doing if they're stampeded to, to get involved with taxpayers' money in housing. Perhaps aided by our administrator, who seems to feel that that's an important issue for, for this commission to get involved in. Again, missing on this agenda today is this evening is the apology resolution for the clothing issue. It must be done. We should not smile and laugh about it. It's not a laughing matter. A lot of damage has been done and a lot of million dollars has been wasted. I suggest that we get going on it, perhaps since Mr. Dyer is a lawyer, he can prepare it quite quickly for you. So the other thing is, there's, you are all charged to work hard on a lot of things. And so among these other things, the, we listened for two hours to a May City Commission meeting with the mayor being the chair. Lots of public comment. But in spite of public comment, which was at times almost misunderstandable what the issue was. The mayor on two or three, three or three occasions provided and became very accommodating and was accommodating to those speakers. There were two incidents in which the person was rambling on and he was cut off because of time limit. The mayor injected and says, how much longer? Do you have some time? Can you get it done? And the person said, yes. And that person was given two extra minutes of time. Yet our, our commissioner seems to be having a great dislike because the highest priority item we had by the 2023 Commission was to remove people from public comment and specify what we could speak at. Quite a contrast. Maybe we should all watch that video, help ourselves to be more professional and more accommodating to the public. Yeah, month or two, I'll be preparing a document, a future report of all the projects for the last 35 years or major project that the county got involved in. Almost every one was initiated by the county commissioners. None were initiated by the public petitioning for action. Think of that. County commissioners obviously have such a high esteem of themselves that they're omniscient and militant. Even though the people never came and petitioned you for it. And I welcome the, the comments by Mr. Robbins today because he seems to be getting us closer to looking at the three things in life. What we want, what we need, and what we can afford.
Thanks, Mr. Mikowski.
The commission has been working on things that are mostly wants. We have little concern for needs. We enjoy, well, enjoy our lives and patting ourselves on our backs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Weisner, Elmwood Township. And again, only way for our elections. One person, one ballot, one vote, one day. Here's an example of fraud right here. This is Colorado. Every other county in Colorado has this pattern where you would expect the voting to even out and come in the middle here. Republicans are up here. They don't want the tax. The Democrats are down here. They do want the tax. Every county is like that except for Rappahoe, where they're perfectly aligned. That's one of the handouts I've already given you. The three things we need to hear from this county would be the cast vote records. We had a promise that that was going to be checked on. And we want to know how they can have 80% or 168 counties that were looked at out of 202 showed taking votes in the beginning of the election and then evening it out at the end. Also, these two gentlemen, the head of not Dominion, but Election Source, they both said according to a report down in the lower, in Michigan County, that there was a backdoor to the machines. We absolutely need to hear on that. And also the 2020 election, the county's Antrim, Leland and Grand Travers showed it. Like an average of about a 40% difference, unexpected difference on that Supreme Court case. And also this one again, these are the folks, these are the Democrats, just a reminder. All in 2018. And I would challenge you, anyone, commissioners, Democrat, Republican, explain how come they were all concerned about this in 2018 and none of them are now? There's only one explanation. They're comfortable with what we have now. And a month ago, put this up online. These are the simple way to hand count. And you can just print it off yourself and go through it. Took me two hours to figure it out, which is, it's a 40 minute video. It's pretty simple. These are the handouts. This one is a ballot tally and you would have about five of these in this election. And those are transferred to this one, which is a batches summary. That is real easy. And then you put the results on this one. And these are the actual results, but they're by number and you transfer them to this one, which is the actual names. You just carry it over. Real easy. And this one shows apples to slice comparison. They're different front and back. 271 for the whole ballot for Hand County, 384 for just a slice. And the things they're not telling you are back here. These are the things we don't know that's in the rest of the apple. Equipment, purchase or lease, software purchases, ongoing upgrades, emergency powers. I'm just skimming through it. Technicians and support to move, you know, it goes on. I don't want to take all my time to read it, but there's a whole lot more in the apple for the cost. And it's already costing more. So and the Rasmussen report, this one, I shared, over 50% of the people surveyed said they would be happy to go to a gym or a county building and count these votes. So it's not a matter of people won't come. Now, this last handout that I just gave you, exclusive Orange County, they found 20% of the voters were either phantom, phantom, non-citizens, invalid, or phantom voters. And on page two, the person in charge, they used his data. He said, well, let me record present these two professors to look at your data. But the two professors were very slanted. The first one, they said, no, you look at your data. We found this to be true. And you explain, you, you should be concerned about this. And I'll just refer to this PICA case. It's on the back page. It was from 18 something, 1888 or coy. And it says, the evil intent consists of disobedience to the law. So that's like.
Thank you, Mrs. Weisner.
Thank you. That's like what we have here in our county. You need to hear about those answers.
Matt, I believe you were next.
Good evening. Kathy Dawkins, Leland Township. Well, it's a good thing I kind of went near the end because a lot of what, some of what I was going to say, Keith and Dana and Jean covered it for me and they did a really good job. So thank you, guys. Probably said it better than I could. But I do want to add a little bit to what Dana talked about as far as we are in our fourth month of this new board. And I would think that by now, all of the commissioners should understand that you do have a packet. I know you get it, I think, a week ahead of time, don't they, Michelle? About five days before the meeting. I won't put you, I'm sorry, put you on the spot. A lot of us have already ourselves read the packet and the information in it. And some of the questions that were asked up here, I already knew the answer. And I didn't even have to look it up because I had already read it before I came to the meeting. The other thing is with the drain commissioner, I'm wondering if he has never worked in government. Because people who haven't worked in government don't understand how the process works when you want, when you have to spend money. And I know he had some, there were concerns about a printer, an office, and then the truck. And I apologize because I didn't go back through the minutes. But I remember that in my memory, he went out and did some work on his own without first running it through the county administrator at the time, which caused problems. And I'm wondering if this is also what happened with the truck. I don't know. But I'm one, I'm, my question, my concern is if someone hasn't sat down with them, that I would recommend that our new administrator sit down with the drain commissioner and explain how it works when you want to spend money and at what point you have to ask permission. I think back when I was with a prosecutor's office, it was 250. We had to go to the board to get additional money. And that would save everybody a lot of time and heartache. Thank you for the lactation room. As a woman who breastfed three of her children and my two daughters are breastfeeding their children, this is something that's really important. My daughter, who's a school teacher, they don't have a lactation room, even though they're supposed to. She has to use a bathroom. And when you have other people also using that bathroom, it makes it really hard to do that. So I'm thankful that you folks are working towards that. It makes a big difference. And again, thank you. I think you guys, you know, you really are doing a great job. I know I kind of came and said some negative things, but I do want to say, I think you're doing a great job. I know it's a lot of work. You're not getting paid what you're worth. But I, so I really appreciate you putting your time and effort in continuing to make our county the place where we all want to live.
Any other public comment? Yes, Renee?
Good evening. We have some good news today. We've had some wins in the legislature, please, to Renee Wyler, Lake Leland. And so we have, many of you know that I've been advocating for cleaning up the land records. And we've had so much fraud in Wayne County. There were 13,000 deed inquiries, fraud inquiries. And so Bernie Youngblood and myself and other people who were very interested in auditing the land records got together and we passed the Michigan House Bill 5598 and 5599. And it was signed into law November of 2024 by the governor. And it makes it to, what it, what it says is it's signed into law aimed to crack down on deed fraud and protect homeowners from real estate scams. Specifically, HB 5598 makes filing a false deed a felony. While HB 5599 modifies penalties for certain felonies, including those related to fraudulent documents. So we're going to be looking at the fraudulent documents in our land records here in Michigan. We're also doing this in Fulton County, Georgia, and Orange County, California. So that's a big win. And another win we had with the Department of Justice was that Chief of Staff Chad Mazzell recently put out a press release. And it says today, the Department of Justice determined that multiple layers of removable restrictions shielding administrative law judges are unconstitutional. And so we've had a really big problem with judicial officers overreaching. And so now the Department of Justice is looking into that. And they're not going to be shielding any of them if they are denying people their constitutional rights and their due process. So thank you for that.
Any other public comment? Thank you. Next up, we have commissioner comments.
So we have a new administrator in, within our methods. And it's been like this since I but with certain, with everything that comes up where there is an action sought that says at the bottom, suggested motion. And I appreciate your opinion. I mean, as in you and previous commissioners, and I'd like to hear your thoughts in. But that makes it sound as though you're making a recommendation for a motion as opposed to providing the wording for a motion that, that we might consider. Not that I don't want to hear your opinion, but sometimes you may not even agree with what is before us. And because you're not, you know, you're not the sole person who puts it on the agenda or provides us that information. So I, you know, I want to hear your thoughts. So I, you know, I want to hear your thoughts, so if you have opinions on things. But probably the suggested motion makes it appear that it's your thought, your opinion before the board as opposed to just straight it out. So anyway, so if you can maybe think about rewording that so the public doesn't get the idea that you're in support of all these motions when you may not be, or they end up changing. See, I'm, maybe I'm.
Yeah, and I can kind of respond to that. Yeah, one thing you should always keep in mind is, even if you disagree with the recommendation, a motion should always be in the affirmative as if you're going to prove something. That way you don't get into the situation where you are, you need to vote against something to be in favor of it. And or vice versa, vote for something to be against it, so it should always be in the, in the, in the affirmative to prove rather than to disprove.
I I agree, it just that leaves the impression that, that it's your recommendation that the county were approved as opposed to the motion we need, which is in the affirmative. I got no, no problem at all with the the motion itself, it's just how it's stated makes it sound like.
And I certainly, you know, basically at this point, I as administrator, using essentially what you've done in the past. And I, and I would agree that anytime we we present that, it's always in a suggested form rather than as to its content, always, it's always a suggested form. There are certain things you might want to have that are technical considerations, for example, what we had tonight to approve as presented versus as amended is is very critical. Sometimes it's necessary to specify who should be signing, for example. If it's something that might require further, further consideration to have approval subject to language that's acceptable to legal counsel, for example, would be something that we would suggest in a motion. So in all cases, when administration suggests a motion, it is with the notion that you can change it to anything you want to it, subject to your own best consideration. It's just a suggestion, that's all that it ever is, that all it ever should be, frankly.
Well, I, I don't agree with Commissioner Campbell because I want to hear what our very talented staff, they're writing the executive request, or if it's you, I want to hear. We can always talk about it, we can always disagree, but we've looked a long time for an administrator that we thought would have some good recommendations and some good advice, and I want to hear.
I said I wanted to hear. I said I want to hear your opinion and just that leaves the, I think that leaves an impression that it's your opinion for, for, or with, and I want to see the motion and I want to hear your thoughts, I appreciate your thoughts and I I agree with your thoughts. I just don't want the the people reading it from a third, from outside, to have a different thought for what that means.
I understand the distinction and how both, both approaches are legitimate and I try to walk very straight. Commissioner Walter, then, Mr. Algar.
No, I was going to agree with Ty, I mean, you've got a clean suggested motion, that's all it is, a clean suggested motion. That's what we have debate for. We can use support, the clean suggested motion is clean, we can all understand what it says. And we can either support it or not support it. And in putting the suggestion thing, it brings it up to everybody so that everybody understands it. If we don't agree with it, then we can always kill it. But, you know, everybody needs to understand, it's better than saying, hey, let's let's vote on this, yes or no. We've got a clean suggested motion and everybody can understand if it's passed. If we don't want it to pass, it won't pass.
I have to agree also with these two gentlemen. This just, all they do is give us the parameters that need to be included in a motion. And they put it in words, we can change it. So they're not telling us what to do, you can do what you want. But this gives us the parameters and it's very helpful.
If you just put suggested motion at the end, that would probably do it.
And again, I, I I hope that you all recognize too that you're right, just, I've had just a little, about two and a half weeks into the job, two meetings, I'm just getting to know all of you and what your, what your particular interests and 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 positions are and all those things and 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 I'll, you know, do exactly what Kathy did in some instances. When I know it's going to be one of your hot buttons, we'll be contacting you in advance to let you know something's coming up and maybe even adjust the the recommendations based upon, upon those, that that input. And I always would, would encourage anytime you see something coming up on the, on the agenda that you, you may follow prior to the meeting, say, I got a problem with this, this is, you know, you better have this answer ready for for me at the meeting, I'd be happy to to do so.
We have to be really careful about talking about an issue before the meeting.
Not, yes, if you're doing that as as a deliberative body, if there's a quorum of you deliberating, yes. But if you're contacting me in advance and say, this is a question that I want answered, that's not a violation of the meeting's activity in the slightest. And and that's something that I would encourage you to discourage.
I ethically failed on that, honestly judging by, all I meant, I didn't want people to think it was your personal opinion for that motion.
No, and I, I appreciate, because I I can see how some, some people would take that, you know, but I, as a board, you know, as as a member of the board, I deeply value our administrator's input because a lot of times he's sat down with department heads. You know, nose to nose and dug a lot deeper than as a board, we could sit here and ask those questions, you know, so and that, a lot of times that recommendation comes off of that, so I value his recommendation, but I I understand where you come from and how it can be viewed as that sometimes, so I appreciate it, so. Do you have any other Commissioner comments?
This is going to be a tough one, so bear with me. Been four months with this board, I've enjoyed working with you. Enjoyed this first month with your administrator, Dyer. But I want to go back four years ago, it's time that, listening to Mr. McCowsky. You know, four years ago, on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one, yes, I started it, I take responsibility. But I'm also going to say, you know, it got out of control, there were four people up here right now was with me, got out of control and it didn't go the way I wanted it to go. I was a young commissioner and I've learned a lot in the last four years, two on board and two was sitting in the crowd and four months up here. And you know, we're approaching the four-year mark on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. And it's time in this building that that scam, it's time we heal, it's time to heal as a board, time to heal as a people in this building, clerk, everybody, and we move forward. We've come a long ways in four years, but no one seems to want to talk about that. We have a finance director, she started to show that she's doing a hell of a job. We got an HR person that gave a demonstration last week. We are moving forward to what we started four years ago. And let's start looking at the good, Mr. McCowsky, can you hear me? Tonight, you're going to get your wish, I apologize to the clerk for what we started. I can't speak for the other six here, but I'm also tired of five eleven of twenty-one, I have to heal too. That was the same day my son died and every time you guys bring it up, it's an old wound. So we can move forward now, we have our two departments, we're all going to move forward with that, I want to say thank you.
Any other Commissioner comments? Not move on to approval of financials?
I'd like to just echo what Administrator Dyer said about motions and your comments about motions because some of the packet this month was to clean up messy motions. I think that I appreciate your comments and I'll do my best to make sure my motions are accurate and reflect exactly what we're trying to do here, so. And he is correct, they are used by the finance department when this meeting is done, I tear the packet apart. I give them to my staff, we get certified excerpts from the clerk after the minutes are approved. They're attached to the invoice so that if it's a capital outlay, the auditors look at it. So it is, and that's why, if I don't have approval to pay something, I I can't pay it, I have to come back to you. And motions mean things and they are used a lot. So thank you, Administrator Dyer, for expanding on that as well. So late, late claims.
Money.
I moved up a little on the county board commissioners, approved claims and accounts in the amount of twenty-eight, two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-five cents.
Support by Commissioner Algar, discussion? Not all of their emotions, say aye. Also say nay. Motion period seven zero.
I think that the bill on county board commissioners approved post-oddic claims and claims and accounts in the amount of three million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-two cents.
Support by Commissioner Russell, discussion? Not all of their emotions, say aye. Will say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that will adjourn.